Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. We're delighted to have all of you this evening. There, the agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room for you to follow along, and there will be two opportunities this evening to address the board. The first opportunity is... Yeah, it's not on here, sorry. Six point one, you will have five minutes and a timer will be shown on the screen. And there is a sign up sheet in the back of the room for you to sign up on. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Altman?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker is absent. Mrs. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here. Will you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Up first, district highlights and recognitions. We do not have any this evening. We also do not have any reports. That takes us to five point one. Approval of the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting held on Monday, October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments here? Hearing none.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
We do not have any public comments this evening. That takes us to financials. Seven point one, approve the financial report and investments for October two thousand twenty-three. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
And Ms. Marshall?
Thank you, President Davidson, members of the board. So this is October two thousand twenty-three, so October thirty-first month end, two thousand twenty-three. For the general fund, we had year-to-date receipts of ninety-three point five million, year-to-date expenditures in the general fund of sixty-three point five million, and we ended with an unencumbered general fund balance of one hundred and ninety-six point two million. For all funds, we had year-to-date receipts of one hundred and twenty-two point seven million, year-to-date expenditures of one hundred and five point three million, and we ended with unencumbered fund balance for all funds at two hundred and thirty-one point eight million. And that's all I have for that. If there's any questions?
Hearing none.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Seven point two, resolution to approve the purchases in accordance with O R C five seven oh five point four one and Board Policy sixty-three twenty. May I have a motion, please?
So...
So moved.
Second.
And Ms. Marshall?
Thank you again. So this is, we have what we call then-and-now purchase orders. So this is where we have a purchase order that's dated after an invoice date of when goods or services were ordered. And we have three in front of you this evening. We have one for Varsity Brands Holding Company, and this was to replace a purchase order that was set up under an incorrect vendor. So it was just under the wrong vendor, so that was corrected. And we can't go back and change a purchase order outside of the month that was set up. And then we have a couple for the... The grants from Jan Fedarenko and Janine Crum Fine Arts. So this was part of a grant that they thought they had something open, but they didn't. It was just the timing of that, so...
Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Moving on to the personnel consent agenda, would it be okay if we took this as one? May I have a motion for eight point one through eight point sixteen?
So moved.
Second.
And welcome, Mr. Cooper.
Good evening, President Davidson, Vice President Meyer, members of the board, Ms. Marshall and Dr. Clark. This evening's personnel consent agenda includes several action items with regard to resignations, retirements, leaves of absence, contract status changes, one-time pays and other employment-related decisions. Additionally, there are two M O As and one M O U for your consideration, as well as proposed changes to our A A S and administrative guidelines. I would like to start the details of my report with recognizing our retirees on this agenda. Within our classified staff, Ann Collins is retiring after sixteen years of service to our schools, and Tony Miller after twenty-two years of service. Within our certified staff, Tanya Barton is retiring after twenty-one years of service, Elizabeth Beth Dalen with twenty-five years, and Kyle King with thirty years of service. We appreciate all of their dedication to the students and families of our district and wish them well in their years ahead. Under the contract status changes portion of the agenda, we are seeking your approval of, uh, to replace cafeteria recess aide and crossing guard positions to the title of building aide. Your approval would also reclassify the position from hourly as-needed employees to contracted employees through an amendment to the A A S guidelines, which is noted under section eight point one five. Building aides would receive personal and sick leave outlined in the A A S guidelines and be eligible for benefits based on their contracted hours. It is our hope that these changes will help us to not only retain current employees in these positions, but also to appeal to more candidates for these positions in the future as posted. Item eight point one-two is a memorandum of understanding, or M O U, with our W E A to raise the wage amount for athletic events assistance. The current rate reflects minimum wage in the state of Ohio, which was raised with an M O U last year when the state's minimum wage rate was raised to ten dollars and ten cents per hour. Ohio's minimum wage is set to increase to ten forty-five on January first, two thousand twenty-four. This M O U increases the wage for athletic events assistance to thirteen dollars to note not only address the recent trend of annual minimum wage increases in the state, but also to reflect a rate that retains individuals in this role and appeals to others to help staff athletic events. The memorandum of agreement, or M O A, with the W E A documents mutual agreement between the board and W E A to contract outside services for a speech-language pathologist. While the desire was to fill this position with a candidate hired directly by the district, we were unable to secure a qualified candidate. For item eight point one-four, we are seeking your approval of an M O A with W E S S A as it pertains to our five oh four secretary C grant positions. After a few years of being classified as a C grant position, the district has made the determination to add these positions, with your approval this evening, into our general fund and renew them indefinitely. The M O A attached is an agreement that waives the requirement to post and establishes seniority dates for the current incumbents in these positions. With regard to item eight point one-five, we're seeking your approval for changes to the A A S guidelines. One revision is the aforementioned building aide position and related benefits eligibility. The other revision is to reclassify the fiscal coordinator position to senior fiscal coordinator due to the job responsibilities. Lastly, item eight point one-six includes proposed changes to the administrator guidelines. The board made adjustments to these guidelines most recently at the April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three board meeting. Since then, at the board's request, a team of administrators and two board members reviewed the details of the administrative guidelines and provided input for the board to consider. The guidelines for your action this evening reflect changes that considered that team's input, as well as input from Ms. Marshall, Dr. Clark and the individual members of the board. At this time, I'm happy to take any questions you may have. Sorry for the lengthy report.
Oh, just congratulations, as always, to our retirees. There are a couple folks in there that I know, well, all of them have touched so many kids' lives, and that's a lot of years. I didn't add it up, but just, we always appreciate them and wish them well. Thank you.
Ditto. I just had a quick, I want to also thank all those that took the time and put a lot of effort into the administrative guidelines. I know that lots of people provided their input and I appreciate their time. Just a quick question about the speech-language pathologist. I'm wondering if next year the idea is then to try to hire for them?
Yeah, so we will actually have a posting here coming soon for next year already for that position. And with that, I would hope that we don't need to contract the services, as we can fill in-house potentially.
Thank you.
We're gonna try to get ahead of it.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
We do not have any old business, but we do have some new business. Ten point one, first reading, eight six zero zero transportation, and I'd like to welcome Randy Snyder.
Good evening, President Davidson, Vice President Meyer, members of the board, Dr. Clark and Ms. Marshall. Before you this evening for a first reading are updates and revisions to Policy eighty-six hundred, also known as the guiding principle to our transportation guidelines or policy here in the district. These first readings and these updates are recommended for review according to current board policy, Neola recommendations, and needed language housekeeping to align this policy with recent updates to the Ohio Administrative Code and the Ohio Revised Code. Policy eighty-six hundred is our primary transportation policy, initially adopted on December fourteenth of two thousand nine. And we're pleased to be able to say we continue here at Westerville. Our policies continue to exceed the state minimum requirements in the state of Ohio. Happy to answer any questions on the first Policy eighty-six hundred.
Hearing none. You want to go on to the second one?
Certainly. The second one is Policy eighty-six fifty, which is primarily updates to the use of school vans for transportation of students in the district. And again, those updates are recommended by a Neola and also bring that policy in line with recent adjustments and changes to Ohio Administrative Code and Ohio Revised Code.
Any questions here? Hearing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, recommended action, standing business. Eleven point one, donations. May I please have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Second.
And we are so grateful for each and every donation, so thank you to all of our donors.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Eleven point two, early graduates may have a motion to approve the graduation candidates who have completed all local and state requirements?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Baldwin, welcome.
Good evening, President Davidson, Dr. Clark, Mrs. Marshall. We have twelve students in front of you who are candidates for graduation. These students are expected to complete their graduation requirements before their cohort completes theirs this May. These students are planning to walk in the May graduation ceremony, but may start their careers after high school before then.
Just congratulations to the...
It's really great.
Yes.
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 Yes. Eleven point three, out-of-state and overnight field trips may have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Baldwin?
So before you, we have several out-of-state field trips, three of which are for our sports groups at the high schools, and they won't be missing any school as a result of those trips. And then the other trips that are before you are for annual Washington D.C. trip that our eighth graders take, so you have a request from each middle school. Three of our middle schools will be going at the same time on May seventh, and then two of our middle schools will go to D.C. on April thirtieth, as scheduled right now. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I always, well, I just have a question about cost, right? For, I think about all the trips, but in particular, I'm thinking about the Washington D.C. trips. And I believe we're contracted with the same tour provider, right? So the cost is the same at every school? Is that right, or?
We have the same provider for four of our middle schools. Genoa Middle School is with Prodigy Tours, and then the other four are with Prime Tours.
Okay.
The cost is pretty similar across those. There is a little bit of a difference for the Genoa, I believe it's fifty dollars more.
Okay, okay. And in terms of helping students whose families find, I mean, it's a pretty, it's an expensive trip, right?
Over seven hundred dollars for the trip, and there's lots of activities planned. Our students, our teams will do fundraisers. When we do fundraiser though, as a school that is applied to everyone attending the trip, so it's not for an individual person, it would reduce the cost across the board. And then I know our tour groups also will make scholarships available, and they run those for our students who may need assistance in attending the trip.
Okay, thank you. Always trying to, I know lots of people have their minds on this, right? Trying to just find ways to make that more accessible for more students, so.
And I encourage you, if the family had a question, to reach out to the building principal to help them navigate that.
Great, thank you.
So just a quick question, why the difference between Prime and Prodigy? Why don't we just do the same?
I'm working with my team on that. It's been for several years that they've used the different vendors. So it's something I continue to have a conversation with my team about, what that looks like. I know Genoa's been with Prodigy for as long as I can remember.
And you said it's a little bit more?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Eleven point four, a resolution of impracticality for transportation. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Welcome back, Mr. Snyder.
Thank you. Before you this evening is a resolution declaring impracticality to transport a list of identified students. Ohio law for, allows for public schools to determine the impracticality of transportation after consideration of a number of factors such as the cost of providing the transportation and the number of students requesting to be transported. On September eleventh of this year, the board passed a resolution declaring forty students impractical for transportation, and this evening before you is a list containing fifty-five additional students that have been deemed impractical to transport. Our Department of Purchasing and Logistics has evaluated each list of these private school students per the requirements of section thirty-three twenty-seven point oh two of the Ohio Revised Code and declared the listed students impractical to transport. Approving this list of fifty-five students would allow the district to offer payment in lieu of transportation and the manner provided per the Ohio Revised Code and the amount which is set forth by the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. This evening, we are recommending that the board approve this list of students declared impractical for transportation and allow us to offer them payment in lieu. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Hearing none.
Thank you.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Eleven point five, resolution, a settlement agreement. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Eleven point six, another resolution, settlement agreement. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Eleven point seven, a resolution to approve a consulting agreement. The Impact Group, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
And I'd like to pass this over to Dr. Clark.
Yes, with a new superintendent, a new board member and a reorganization of the administrative team, we thought it would be a good idea for a board retreat with the cabinet to talk about lots of things. How are we going to work together? How are we going to communicate? What our roles are, those sorts of things. And the Impact Group is a expert in the field of moderating these, and I think it's always good to have an outside person who comes in without any kind of agenda to help us on our, on our way. The date and time are still to be determined. I know that a survey went out to the board today to find a good date for us, but sometime in January.
Great. Any questions? You gonna come back for that?
That's okay.
You ready?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Eleven point eight, a resolution to approve the enhancement of coverage for the treatment of autism spectrum disorder for the district health insurance plan effective January first, two thousand twenty-four. May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
And Mr. Cooper's back.
I apologize, the lengthy report, now you have to hear me twice. The District Insurance Trust Committee composed of members of each of the district's four unions, as well as district administrators, recently met to discuss our health insurance plans coverage with regard to autism spectrum disorder, or A S D. We discuss therapies for those diagnosed with A S D. Currently, Ohio law defines A S D as a medical condition, not a behavioral health condition. As such, applied behavioral analysis therapy, or A B A therapy, commonly used to treat those with A S D, is currently covered by our medical insurance carrier Anthem at the state minimum of twenty hours per week. Currently, a proposed federal rule is working through the process to effectively eliminate the ability of a state to determine autism as a medical condition. Assuming proposed legislation is not changed when finalized, which Anthem fully expects, Anthem will be modifying the A B A services to an unlimited number of hours per week. The proposed regulations indicate a compliance date for plan years on or after January first, two thousand twenty-five. The District Insurance Trust Committee recommends the district's health insurance plan to increase the weekly limit for A B A therapy to thirty-five hours per week. This will, with your permission this evening and your approval, the health insurance plan will take effect January first, the changes January first, two thousand twenty-four. It is the opinion of our third-party benefits liaison, Hiran, that anticipated costs of this enhancement cannot be confirmed because there's only a small sample of utilization of this benefit at this time. However, their projection of costs based on the membership that you currently utilize the services are anticipated to be negligible. Any questions you have?
Any questions?
No.
Hearing none. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr., Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Eleven point nine, resolution to grant land to T-Mobile for a utility easement. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Welcome, Carrie Dennis.
Good evening, President Davidson, Vice President Myers, members of the board, Dr. Clark and Ms. Marshall. At the May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three board meeting, the board approved a settlement agreement with Crown Castle and T-Mobile related to the payment for the use of electric supply to the cell towers located on district property. The resolution before you this evening is for an approval of an easement, a utility easement, to prevent a recurrence of the same problem in the future. The parties recognize that it would be necessary to establish a ten-foot-wide utility easement at Westerville North High School, so the electricity to that tower can be separately metered directly to T-Mobile. Thus, it is being recommended that the board grant the utility easement to T-Mobile and Crown Castle, as shown in the documents.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Eleven point ten, a resolution approving the purchase of school buses. May I have a motion, please?
So, so moved.
Second.
Me again.
Thank you.
Good evening. The, this resolution is requesting the authorization to purchase seven buses from Cardinal Bus Sales and Service in the amount of nine hundred and eleven thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. The seven new buses will replace existing buses that will be retired from our fleet. We operate on a fourteen-year replacement cycle as recommended by our two thousand and four state audit, and we need to replace these buses under those guidelines. Funding for these vehicles will come from the capital improvement levy funds that the community approved on May fifth, in two thousand and nine. The buses were bid through Meta Solutions Cooperative with Cardinal Bus Sales and Service, identified as the lowest responsible bid for the seventy-two passenger propane buses. The cost per seventy-two passenger conventional propane bus is a hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. It is recommended that the board approve the purchase of the seven seventy-two passenger conventional propane buses from Cardinal Bus Sales and Service for a total cost of nine hundred and eleven thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. That's a lot of words.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Eleven point eleven, a resolution to approve two thousand twenty twenty-three clean school bus rebates program. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Again, final time, good evening, President Davidson, Vice President Myers, members of the board, Dr. Clark and Ms. Marshall. The district will be purchasing, with your now-approved, seven conventional propane buses this fiscal year and scheduled to replace fifteen next fiscal year to replace aged-out buses in the fleet. If awarded this grant money, it will be a decrease in the amount that the district has to contribute. These buses are all two, from two thousand and ten, are older buses, which are the only buses that are getting approval on this next round of grant money by the E P A. If awarded, we have two years to access this grant money, which works perfect with the timing of the seven buses this fiscal year, fifteen next fiscal year. Cardinal Bus is the only supplier of propane-powered buses that bid on the meta bid this year, so there will not be a conflict of interest if awarded. We are no, we are under no obligation, and there's no cost for us to apply for this grant program. Approval tonight will allow us to participate in the two thousand twenty-three clean school bus program. It is recommended that the board approve the participation in the two thousand twenty-three clean bus rebate program. Any questions?
I just have a quick question. I'm, I'm, I think I heard you say this, but I just want to be clear. So the seven that we just talked about in eleven point ten, if we got this rebate program, would pay for those seven?
It would reduce the amount that we pay. It doesn't cover the full cost. The amount actually awarded is not decided at this time, and it has to do with how many buses participate in the program.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
No.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Eleven point twelve, appointment to the Library Board of Trustees of the Westerville Public Library. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall, you want to talk to us about this?
Sure. So as the board knows that under Ohio Revised Code, the Westerville Public Library is established as a school district library, which although they're separate, we are their taxing authority, and they cover the same footprint that the school district covers. So that requires that the board approve any trustees that they've put up before us for consideration. So the Board of Trustees met on Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, to consider a candidate to replace Ms. Heather Creed, whose term expires December thirty-first of this year. And there were seven candidates that applied, and after reviewing resumes and interviewing, they unanimously decided for Ms. Michelle Bumpus to replace Ms. Creed. And her term will expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-thirty, and begin on January first, two thousand twenty-four. Quite a commitment there. Yeah.
Okay, any questions or comments here?
Oh, just, thanks to Ms. Creed for serving and assuming that the vote goes well here. Congratulations to Ms. Bumpus. Thanks for being interested in doing that.
Vote no now.
Ready? Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yeah.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Okay, moving along here. Eleven point thirteen, this is the show tonight. May I have a motion to approve the five-year forecast?
So moved.
Second.
And we'll pass it over to you, Nicole.
Thank you. So I'm gonna go up to the podium, because I hear the clicker works better up there. All right. So here we are, November two thousand twenty-three. So throughout this presentation, something I like to do, I started doing a couple of years ago, is I've added pictures of just different things that our kids are doing around the district. Charlie highlights a lot of them in our Friday news and announcements, but I thought it might be fun to have some in the presentation as we go through this, too. So this first picture, that's Anne Hurst Elementary's choir celebrating their fiftieth birthday. Okay. So the purpose of the forecast is a valuable long-range planning tool. So Ohio Revised Code forty-five twelve, or five, fifty-seven oh five point four one two requires a four-twelve certificate, so a certificate of revenue for any district expenditures for new salaries or wage schedules, any appropriations resolution, any contracts that are over five hundred thousand dollars, or any contract that's a multi-year contract. In that case, we have to sign what's called a four-twelve certificate, and this forecast... and this forecast provides the basis for us to do that. So that certificate requires my signature, the board president's signature, and the superintendent's signature. Uh, the Ohio Department of Education and workforce development now require, you also use the forecast for determining a state's fiscal solvency. In this picture, we are looking at Westerville Senior just getting ready to graduate. So the requirements of the five-year forecast, we have to file a five-year projection no later than November thirtieth of each year with the Department of Education and workforce. Uh, we have to update the five-year projection no later than May thirty-first. We have to include the current fiscal year and the ensuing four fiscal years, and we also include three years of actual historical information. Looking at the structure of the forecast, the five-year forecast only includes our general operating fund. It does not include any of our special revenue funds, debt service fund, anything like that. Um, I like to break it off in like three different categories. So the fir, the top section, one point oh one through two point oh eight, that is for revenues. Expenditures run lines three point oh one through five point oh five. And then our changes in balances and reserves, those are lines six point oh one through fifteen point oh one. And they are numbered on the side of the forecast, if you look at the actual forecast. And just a reminder for everyone that our fiscal year runs July first through June thirtieth. And this picture is a picture of students participating in the Makers Expo at Heritage Middle School. Um, thinking about challenging, challenges of the forecast, if they come up. Um, so legislative changes. House Bill one twenty-six was a big impact to us with Board of Revision settlements, eliminated our ability to do that. We also have the state legislature, which we'll talk about, talking about property taxes, property values, and how all that works. And looking at unfunded mandates that the legislature continues to throw at us, those could add unexpected costs to the forecast that we don't have currently included. The federal funds for ESRs will expire over this year. The final round of ESR funds expire this year. And then property values increasing has caused the legislature to look at those. And just a reminder that projections we have today are based on the best information we have available to us today, and they will most definitely change going forward as new information becomes available to us. And our pictures are students engaging in mystery science activity at Robert Frost Elementary. I think last year they dissected squids, so I'm not sure what they're doing there. Uh, changes from last May to this forecast. So state funding was a big change. So the state updated the increase. They increased the updates, the inputs, for the Fair School Funding Plan to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two costs. Previously, they had been using fiscal year twenty-eighteen-based costs as, to calculate the funding formula. They updated that to fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. Now, just to remind everybody, we are in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, so we're still two years behind on actual costs for operations. Interest rates have continued to increase. And then we've also updated staffing numbers to account for some plans for special education in the future. And this picture includes Mark Twain uh, celebrating the mini-cultures in the community with multicultural night. It's supposed to work better from up here, that's why. Okay, so looking at the ESR funds. So this is a slide that we've had for quite some time in the forecast presentation. We had ESRs one, two, and three. So ESR one provided two million dollars, and it ran from March thirteenth, twenty-twenty, through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. ESR two was nine point five million, and it ran from March thirteenth, twenty-twenty, through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. And then ESR three, the last and final round, that runs from March thirteenth, twenty-twenty, through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. So that's the current fiscal year. These funds have to be obligated by June thirtieth and fully expended by September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four, which is the next calendar year, but the current school year. ESR funds are one-time funding that were provided to help with the cost of the impact of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. They're not part of the general fund, but we used the ESR funds to cover expenditures that were normally paid out of the general fund. Because these were one-time costs, we didn't want to add programs with one-time funding, and so that's how the district worked that out. This being the final year, um, we will see all of those expenses come back to the general fund after this fiscal year. And then this picture is mock trial teams at Genoa Heritage and Walnut Springs Middle Schools. Um, they came together to practice for a mock trial competition at Westerville City Council's chambers. They look so serious, don't they? I love it. So this is just a graph and table of all revenues. Things that we're looking at are property value increases, the Fair School Funding Plan. Just a reminder, our last operating levy began in calendar year twenty-twenty-one. The Fair School Funding Plan was implemented at two-thirds of the total through fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, which is next fiscal year. We'll talk a little bit more about that. And we had, we saw the elimination of the Board of Revision settlements. We did have a big influx one time for the property owners trying to hurry up and settle before they were no longer able to do that. Um, but that is approximately one point two million in revenue that we won't see in the future, once that's fully realized. And then we had our interest revenue increase. So overall, for revenues, fiscal year twenty-three actuals, we had sixty-three percent funding from our local property taxes and twenty-five percent from the state of Ohio, and then twelve percent from other sources. For twenty-twenty-eight, the, our local property taxes are projected to be sixty-five percent and twenty-eight percent from the state and seven percent from other sources. So this makeup is heavily dependent on what state funding looks like in the future and could definitely change. The picture here is fifth graders at Robert Frost Elementary learning about energy through the Ohio Energy Project. All right. Local property taxes. So I want to talk some about how property values affect tax rates. So I have some graphs here that I want to show. But just looking at this, um, we had, we're estimating property taxes to be at sixty-four percent of total revenue for the current fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-four. And then our operating levy from two thousand and nineteen began collections in twenty-twenty-one. This forecast is assuming a twenty-two percent increase in residential and agricultural property values, and I'll talk a little bit about what that looks like and what that means. Um, because the state is talking about doing an average, that, that would be what it would be if they were to average our values. And then four percent for commercial and industrial. Uh, House Bill nine twenty, which we'll talk about, restricts growth from increased values on all voted levies. And we will see an increase on inside millage, the unvoted portion, and from new construction, which we'll talk about. Tangible personal property taxes. These are taxes that public, that are on public utility infrastructure. They make about two percent of total prop, of total revenues. And then the picture here is, um, State Senator Andrew Brenner. So him and some other legislators, uh, visited our high schools to, um, learn about our career pathways program. And so he's talking to Matt Fettro, our teacher at the shop at North there. Uh, he serves as the chair for the Primary and Secondary Education Committee and is very, um, influential in the state legislature when it comes to property tax law, so.
Is, uh, he known for being supportive to public schools?
Um, I think it depends on what the, um, subject is and what your perception of being supportive is.
That would be no.
Yeah, that would be no.
Um, not in my experience.
Yeah, I neither. Disappointing.
So just a little bit about property taxes. Inside millage is the non-voted millage that was established by the Ohio Constitution. So years ago, I couldn't tell you how. I've checked with legal counsel, they don't know how. But years ago, the Constitution, um, established ten mills for certain areas. I don't know how the lo, li, lines were drawn, um, but overlapping jurisdictions. Our portion of that is three point eight mills. So we have three point eight mills constant millage, so that never changes. All other millage has to be voted on by our taxpayers. So we call this outside millage. So what, House Bill nine twenty was passed back in the seventies, and it prevents revenue from growing on any voted levies by reducing the millage rates as values increase. So if we look at property values, this is a very, um, simple, as property values increase, tax rates decrease, which means revenues remain unchanged, essentially, on the voted levies. So to kind of show an example of this, we have the graph, this is a graph of our actual assessed property values from two thousand and seventeen to twenty-twenty-three. And then I have estimates for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. So the state of Ohio has the county auditors reappraise properties every six years, and then they do an update every third year in between. And so this graph shows two thousand and seventeen's reappraisal, which went into effect for collection year two thousand and eighteen because we pay, we assess one year and pay the next year. And it also shows a twenty-twenty update and the twenty-twenty-three estimated reappraisal. So this is the estimate. So this table shows the tax millage, or also known as tax rates. So tax rates are mills. That's the unit of measurement that the state of Ohio uses to calculate property taxes. That's what millage is. The full rate, well, let's start with the inside millage rate, the yellow line at the bottom. That's the three point eight mills that was established by the Ohio Constitution. You can see it's been the same since two thousand and seventeen, and it's not going to change going forward. The full rate, the blue line, that's the total voted rate. So these are rates that the voters approved on ballot measures. So that's the actual rate. If you totaled all of the ballot issues up that have been on the ballot, that have been approved by voters, that's the full rate, plus the inside millage. The effective rate for commercial, which is the gray line there, and the effective rate for residential and agricultural is the orange line. And so these are reduced as rates. These, these are the reduced rates that are used to calculate the property tax bills. So as the values increase, the effective rates decrease to ensure that property ta, property owners are not seeing inflationary increases on their property tax bill. So an example of this is in two thousand and nineteen, the voters approved a five-point-nine-mill operating levy. We started collecting in twenty-twenty-one, which is why you see the bump up in twenty-twenty-one on the full voted rate on the blue line. However, the commercial and industrial effective rates only increased by one point three mills. And the residential and agricultural effective rates actually decreased by one point two mills. The district never collected five-point-nine mills on that levy because of how values increased. So just to really drive this home. Maybe. I have graphs. So that's the assessed values. You can see it's increasing. And I'm overlaying the prop, the effective millage or tax rates. And so we can see as those increase, those decrease. It's a very simple, um, graph of how that works. And I should mention, the taxes are calculated, the effective rates, they're calculated based on different groupings of the counties. So your property tax bill is going to increase or decrease relative to your neighbors or the people across the county from you, right? So the county looks at it for the district. So if we were supposed to generate forty million dollars in total, they look at generating forty million dollars in total for the district. But it could affect different properties differently, depending on where they are in the county. I do not receive phone calls from people who see property tax decreases, ever. Ever. I know, it's hard to believe.
Hey, Nicole?
Yeah.
So in, on the flip side, then, is if property taxes decrease to, um...
Would that go up?
Yeah.
That's a great question. So let me go back to here. Maybe. This is like really challenging from up here. Okay. So the five-point-nine-mill operating levy, that's what was approved by voters. There was five-point-nine-mill, and the county auditor said it'll generate approximately fourteen million dollars. The, um... So as the values increase, those rates decrease. If the values decrease, the rates would increase, but they would never go above five-point-nine mills. So we would only generate what fi, up to what five-point-nine mills would provide for if values decreased. So it works, it does work both ways, which we saw during the two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine recession. Um, it does work both ways, but only up to the voted amounts. Through here. Sorry. Uh, so let's talk a little bit about state funding. So state funding is subject to the biennium budget process. And, um, it's projected to be twenty-seven percent for the current fiscal year. And the current fiscal year biennium co, covers twenty-four and twenty-five, right there. And the Fair School Funding Plan was partially implemented for fiscal years twenty-four and twenty-five for the current biennium, with fifty percent of the calculated increases going into effect for the current fiscal year twenty-four, and then up to sixty-seven percent of the calculated increases to go into effect in fiscal year twenty-five. And this forecast does cover three budget periods. Um, so twenty-six, twenty-seven will be a new budget period, and then twenty-eight will be the third budget period. So lots can change in that amount of time. The state share of local property taxes, I swear you can't make this up. It was formerly referred to as property tax allocation. Uh, these are re, these are reimbursements from the state of Ohio for property tax rollback and homestead exemptions. Um, the legislature changed the name during the biennium budget process with House Bill thirty-three because they wanted to make sure that everyone understood that the state is paying for this share of property taxes. This forecast does assume that this reimbursement will remain throughout the forecast period as it stands today. Uh, it should be noted that these reimbursements are subject to the state legislature and that the rollback reimbursement was actually eliminated on all new levies after two thousand and thirteen. And House Bill one of the current General Assembly would eliminate the rollback reimbursements from the state if it were passed, um, which you can see is approximately about fourteen point five million dollars for us this year. Uh, the legislature does continue to talk about this line item as a, an opportunity for reducing funding to public schools. But as I said, the forecast assumes that it will remain as it is. So a little more about, um, the Fair School Funding Plan. So they implemented it beginning in fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, but again, it wasn't fully funded. And so that was through House Bill one-ten. So what they did was they said, okay, we'll calculate your funding, and you'll receive seventeen percent of whatever that increase is that you would be due. So Westerville, for example, was capped previously. And so we continue to be capped because we're, in twenty-two, we only received seventeen percent of the increase we should have otherwise received. In twenty-three, it... In twenty-three, it was thirty-three percent. And in twenty-four, it's fifty percent. And in twenty-five, it's sixty-seven percent. So, the intention is to phase it in over six years. Um, but again, it's subject to the state's biennium budget whether that happens. So, House Bill one-ten was the first one and then um, House Bill thirty-three. And we have no idea what we'll see for the next biennium. Sorry. So, this is just an, a table of the calculation. I like to call it state school underfunding when I do this. Um, so, actual fiscal year twenty twenty-one, that was the non-formula that we had where we just continued to receive the same funding we had in the previous year. And then the governor threw in the student wellness and success funds. Um, we were underfunded in that year by thirteen point one million. So, in fiscal year twenty-two was the first year of the fair school funding plan. We were underfunded by six point two million. But the state also eliminated our transfers out. So, if we remember previously, we had direct transfers out from charter schools and for private school scholarships. Those transfers were eliminated, which was an overall savings to the districts. And then, so for fiscal year twenty-three, we were underfunded by about one point eight million. For this year, we're projected to be underfunded by four point eight million. And next year, um, two point seven million. So, if we're just looking at this five-year period, we're underfunded by twenty-eight point six million. Um, looking at all other receipts, these include payment of lieu taxes, the board of revision settlements that we talked about, um, interest revenue, tuition from other districts for uh, court placed students and students who are residing in our district for whatever reason, for being educated in our district for whatever reason. Um, student fees and then other miscellaneous receipts. The pilot revenue will decrease as tax abatements roll off and those values are added to the tax base. Interest rates, as I've mentioned, have increased um, over the years. And we are projecting those to begin dropping again in fiscal year twenty-five. Uh, House Bill one-twenty-six eliminated the board of revision settlements um, after the one-time increase we saw. And then all other revenue sources are generally one-time receipts. So, these include our Medicaid reimbursements. We also expect to receive an E-rate reimbursement in the current fiscal year twenty-four um, of about a million dollars. That's a one-time uh, reimbursement. Shout out to Tim Stifler in the back for all his work on that, for our uh, infrastructure update. Uh, revenue uncertainty. So, state funding over the last few budget cycles have, have been somewhat unpredictable. I know we dealt with COVID during that time. But um, like I have mentioned before, the state is very quick. If there are problems, to cut schools first before they do anything else. Um, the funding, the fair school funding plan has helped, but it hasn't been fully implemented. Uh, we did experience significant cuts in twenty and twenty-one due to pandemic. The rollback is continually um, talked about when it comes to funding. And the legislative changes like House Bill one, property values, property tax collections, and the economy could all have an impact on revenues going forward. And looking at expenditures, they are in, anticipated to increase annually as the cost to do business and inflation rises um, or inflation stays high. This forecast includes us opening Minerva Park uh, middle school in the current fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-four. And we opened Minerva France Elementary School last year in fiscal year twenty-three. And then the biggest um, hit to our revenues are, or to our expenditures are the portions of the ESAR funds that were being used to offset revenue losses. Uh, those will be expiring and returning back to the general fund in fiscal year twenty-five.
Nicole?
Yes?
Quick question. Can you just talk about, you mentioned inflation of expenses, like how that, just in sort of broad brush, how you calculate that into some of these items?
So, it depends on what the category is really. Um, but overall, we look at, uh, we could have anywhere from three to fifteen, twenty percent depending on what the category is. So, medical expenses, for example, are a big ones. Or we've seen high medical claims. Um, and we're looking at like over thirteen percent increase just for that.
Yep. And, and so, the important piece of that is you're not just applying a blanket number across a bunch of categories. You're being very, very
Yeah, we're being very specific to what, whatever the area is.
Yeah, much appreciated. Thanks.
Yeah, okay. Um, so, looking at overall expenditures, the digit- the district's largest expense is personnel. We are a um, people business. We grow people and educate people and, you know, all of those wonderful things. And we need people to do that. Uh, so, those were eighty-one percent of total expenditures in the last fiscal year. And they're projected to remain at eighty-one percent in fiscal year twenty twenty-eight. And the picture here is students at McVeigh Elementary uh, performing frozen. Wondering if Jennifer will just see me clicking and move it on. Okay. Um, personnel, so for fiscal years twenty-four and twenty-five, we're using the estimates from the district's actual staffing plan. For fiscal years twenty-six through twenty-eight, uh, we do have estimates based on average salaries. The um, new staff in the previous fiscal year, twenty-three from Minerva France Elementary, and then we have the principal for the Minerva Park Middle School. And then we have new sta- staff hired for opening Minerva Park Middle School this fiscal year, twenty-four. Uh, like I mentioned, medical insurance, we're seeing large increases due to high utilization of the plan and high medical cost claims. And then ESAR one provided for two million dollars, ESAR two provided for six million, and ESAR three provided for sixteen point nine million offset expenditures to cover the personnel expenditures that were normally paid out of the general fund. And that will be through fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Those expenditures will fully return to the general fund next fiscal year and fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Um, the student here is at Alcott Elementary competing in the third grade talent show, playing his guitar. Other expenses, so purchase services is our largest other expenditure line and includes payments to other districts for tuition um, for special needs and other students. Utilities and other services, materials and supplies includes textbooks, software licenses, consumable items that do not have long-term useful lives. Capital outlay includes equipment, technology, and other items wit- that do have long-term useful lives. Other objects include services provided from the ESCCO such as our teaching substitutes and our um, classroom aides, and any tax collection fees that were charged from the county for property tax collections. Uh, operating transfers out include transfers to the permanent improvement fund for turf replacement and also to the food service fund to carry any negative balances at the end of the year because the food service fund cannot carry negative balances. Uh, like I mentioned, inflation is anticipated to remain high throughout the forecast period. And the students in this picture are participating in a dance-thon at Foulce Elementary. Um, just thinking about expenditure uncertainty and things that could affect the forecast going forward would be our staffing needs, the educational needs of students, the economy and inflation, healthcare costs, and any unfunded mandates that we might have from the legislature. So, this graph shows revenues, expenses, and changes in the unreserved fund balance over the forecast period, including the last three fiscal years. Uh, notable changes, we had the operating levy, the five point nine mil operating levy that was approved in two thousand and nineteen, began collections in calendar year twenty-one. Uh, we opened the new Minerva France Elementary School last year, opening Minerva Park this middle, the middle school this year. Uh, the projections show six days unreserved cash balance projected for fiscal year twenty-eight. And it would be thirty-eight days if we didn't have any reserves. Uh, the deficit spending uh, is expected to be large. I have a little highlighter here. Oh, that didn't highlight very well, does it? Um, so, the ESAR funds expiring, returning to the general fund in fiscal year twenty twenty-five. You can see when that, that's when that really starts separating in our projections. And this forecast does assume flat state funding after the current biennium budget based on what we know today. Uh, given the projected deficit, I am recommending that the board consider an operating levy in the fall of twenty twenty-four, by the fall of twenty twenty-four. Um, which would first collect in calendar year twenty twenty-five, which would give us a half-year collections in fiscal year twenty-five and a full-year collections in fiscal year twenty-six, beginning in twenty-six. And so, we have a whole work session planned to talk about those things. Uh, my last picture here, I love this. This is Hawthorne's Kindness Council, which is a new initiative teachers and staff members launched in October. And when the council meets, meets each month, Hawthorne hits pause button, hits a pause button for thirty to forty-five minutes. And classes from different grade levels partner together on community building activities and service projects. Isn't that cute? Alright, that's what I have. What questions do you have? Any? Wait for the work session?
Yep. Anybody else?
I'm just...
Okay.
You ready? Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Twelve point one may have a motion to suspend Roberts' rules of order.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Yay. So, we're entering a work session. This gives us a little bit more ability just to speak freely. So, I'm not sure who's going to be joining us.
Who's joining us? Well, I know um, Carrie Dennis is coming and Scott Dorn. And Mr. Reeves, I would assume. And you should have an agenda in front of you. I hope.
He's gone. Are we allowed to have people?
I mean... Thank you. So, um, given the uh, presentation I just gave and the need, the obvious need for a levy in the near future, um, I did ask the board to have a work session so that we could kind of talk about considerations from the forecast. Um, I think Dr. Clark is going to talk to us about the strategic plan and what's going on with that.
Yes, so I, one of the big unknowns um, that will impact um, the, the need for a levy or the size of the, of, of a needed levy is with the strategic plan. And as you know, I've been spending a lot of time meeting with many community groups to get their feedback about what are we doing well, how can we improve, and what do you expect of the superintendent and those, uh, that question about how can we improve is gaining, that, that gets the most feedback. And we're going to use all of that data um, as part of our strategic planning process. Um, so, the, these meetings will go on through February and then starting in March, uh, we'll have a strategic planning committee um, that will uh, put the strategic plan together um, with the goal of having that done by June. And I think that, I think it's um, wise for us to expect that some of the things that comes out of the strategic plan may cost money. It depends on what the needs are that the community sees. Uh, again, it's, it's early right now, but I'm already hearing things about um, desires to increase technology or curriculum offerings or, and those sorts of things. Um, not ready yet to uh, put a finger on what exactly, I feel... Who's the guy that had the fly on him in the debate? Pence, right? I just feel like Mike Pence.
I didn't even see it.
I hope that doesn't go viral. Yeah. Okay, so, um, you know, I, I think that, uh, I lost my train of thought. We will have, we'll have a strategic plan in place by, by June that will give um, the board, I think, a good opportunity to decide how are we going to prioritize whatever comes from this strategic plan, what things um, need to happen sooner rather than later, what things are going to have a cost to them, and, and what kind of value do we place um, on those things? Certainly, some things will not have any cost at all. Uh, but some things I, I think are likely to have a cost. Uh, and so, just keep that in your mind as we start talking about the need for an operating levy, but also the, the size. Uh, how, how much are we going to need um, to be able to support whatever um, uh, whatever items it is that the community values the most.
So, any, just doing the three Qs, I'm just curious, any themes that are, you saying?
There are a lot, yeah, there's a lot of, again, I've had um, about, I've met with probably sixteen groups so far with another fifty or so on the books um, to, to get to. And there are some themes that are, um, that I don't, I don't think are a big surprise. I think um, communication. Everybody wants to increase uh, communication. But you're seeing things like um, increased technology. Specifically, there's a one-to-one initiative. Uh, there's a, a talk about um, the arts. And some of the, I know there were uh, pretty uh, big cuts to the arts program from what I understand, I wasn't here, but in twenty-eleven that haven't been reinstated. And there's some discussion about that. There's always discussion about um, gifted programming. There's, there's discussion about uh, the magnet programming. All of those um, kinds of things have come up uh, from different groups. And I think that it wouldn't surprise me if those continued to come up. But we'll collect the data, we'll put them in themes and see, uh, see where we go. Uh, another big thing is uh, special education. Uh, and I know that we have already forecasted to add some staffing to our special education department. Um, but that continues to come up as well as, I, I, I should have led with this because I think probably the most common thing is social and emotional support for our kids. Um, on the plus side, many, many folks are really happy with the staff. They're really happy with the, the working relationships. They're really um, happy with um, the diversity in the district. Um, but there's also a, a big concern that COVID really had a big impact on social, emotional. And it continues to, and a, a need really to continue to beef up those um, uh, supports for our kids.
So, I, not to divert, but quickly, I know you have a lot more three-Q meetings coming up. So, just um, like for the public, if they're interested in attending any of them, they're usually advertised through the particulars.
Yeah, so the, the three-Q meetings that we have are uh, groups, are current existing groups that we've um, asked uh, to invite me to their meetings. So, it's things like booster clubs and PTAs and um, uh, our, our uh, unions and community organizations and community groups. However, um, before this is all said and done, I also plan to send a blanket survey out to the community for those that did not have the opportunity uh, to sit in on any of those meetings with those same questions. Uh, in fact, we were talking about it today that I, I think at this point, the best way to do that might be through uh, Charlie's uh, letter that she sends to all the community because a, a lot of people get that. But that's just, um, that's just in the back of the, back of the brain right now working. But we absolutely want to give um, people the opportunity for feedback, students too, by the way. I'll be meeting with sixty-six students on Wednesday to ask those same three questions right here in this room.
That's awesome. Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions? So the other thing we have on our agenda to talk about, which Dr. Clark mentioned this a little bit, social and emotional wellness, mental health and school counselors. So the forecast currently includes, we, at the last work session that the board held, it's been a couple of years ago now, we did commit to adding some mental health support positions. And so we have, we hired two this year. And then we're looking at two, an additional one next year, and then an additional one in '26. So that's what's currently in the forecast for the future years.
For middle school, correct?
For mental health, yes. So if I remember correctly, and Jesse or Tammy may be able to confirm, the Adam H. Grant was moving to the middle school, the support for, or to the elementary schools, to support the elementary schools. And then we were beefing up the middle school mental health support. Do you want to talk on that? Come on up!
I know, can you start with, like, where we are and a little bit of background about the different layers?
So let's start with kind of what Mrs. Marshall just said. We have the layered support of social workers coming into the middle schools for the first time. That's been established at the high schools. So every high school has two social workers along with the four school counselors. We have seen so much success there that we really looked at that model for the middle, which is happening this year. So transitioning our social workers into those middle schools, I mean, it's early, but we've seen incredible impact already. And just have a great plan for those next two hires so that every middle school looks similar to our high schools. And really allowing those counselors to do the universal needs, getting into their classrooms, and handing off the heavier mental health pieces to the social workers. And we've just seen that work brilliantly so far this year. So that's the secondary model, right? And, and so as we go down to elementary, you'll see fewer mental health-specific resources, which I think people are starting to feel even more post-COVID. What we...
Can, can you tell the difference? Tell us the difference between a counselor and a mental health specialist?
So a school counselor, I mean, there are two different programs and tracks. So a school counselor, and it has evolved incredibly over the past decade as a school counselor seat. So they really are focusing on the universal social, emotional needs. So maybe that tier-one level, while also really emphasizing academics, schedules, career and college readiness, and those pieces. Where our social workers are licensed, right? They're licensed clinicians. And they are primarily, their expert area is in mental health. So that heavier stuff, right? When you're starting to see significant, you know, signs in the mental health arena, or we have unfortunately lethality assessments for suicide and homicide, that is their wheelhouse. That's what they are trained to do, that's what they are equipped to do, along with a lot of other layers. But those would be the two distinct differences. We wouldn't want our social workers, well, say that nicely, advising college and career plans, right? But we also, you know, know that we've asked some counselors to do the hard mental health work over the years because we just didn't have the resources. So it does get a little conflicting, and oftentimes, people don't know the difference. If they said, "I went and saw my counselor," they have no idea who they saw or what those distinctions are. Is that anything else you would have?
So with the addition of those four staff members over the next couple of years, does that fulfill, like, does that make us whole in the middle schools?
They will have one social worker in each middle school. And then we will have a social worker to support the North Point program at Heritage and potentially share at North, because that's a specialized program that has some pretty intense therapeutic needs. But right now, we have, I know you had mentioned Concord with the Adam funding. We have two still at Heritage and Blendon, one at each. And the idea is that then we'll move them down to the elementary level. So we'll have five of those clinicians at the elementary level.
And how many elementary buildings do we have?
Fifteen.
More than five.
Yeah.
And I, I will say, we're not always fully staffed in those five clinicians from Concord. Same kind of struggles that most nonprofit mental health agencies are up against. And that's not only staffing, but maintaining that staffing. So, you know, it would be lovely to think five, but I can't remember the last time we've had five employed consistently from Concord.
And we have restrictions or constrictions on what we can do with that grant funding. So although they are all social workers, they can't function as a full mental health specialist. And that's why we went away from that model at the middle school level, because the Concord clinicians can't do a lot of that tier-two, tier-three work with students because they're in a prevention model. So we really want to put the prevention down in the elementary. But there's a lot of that classroom guidance work that they would be doing in specific prevention programming. So it doesn't quite function as a mental health provider specialist as we do with the social workers at the secondary.
So for our elementary school students, how often are they receiving instruction in the classroom, like all the kids? So I know we have a couple of different curriculum-based programs that we use, right? So how often are we in there?
So I would say the average for, you're saying our elementary counselors going in and doing SEL curriculum? Each classroom, maybe once a month, would be the average. And then depending on the building size, you know, the frequency could increase. I don't see it less than once a month in most of our buildings.
Okay.
And just as a follow-up question, then, at the elementary level, when you have that really high need, right? Dealing with the serious issues, how do we cover that then at elementary?
Remember when I said we ask our elementary counselors to do social worker things? That's when, right? So it's not as, the intensity is different at the little level, thankfully. But we are seeing numbers that are difficult to see post-COVID with more crisis assessments, more stress management, leading into some significant anxiety, depression, things like that that are on the rise. But we do ask our elementary counselors to tackle that to the best of their abilities. And if there is not a counselor available, then that administrator will step in as well.
In, so those five counselor, social workers that went to the elementary schools, do they rotate?
They just signed two buildings.
Yeah, so there's only two people there right now. And Becky.
And Becky.
So remember, we're still in the first phase of this. So there's still two at middle and three at elementary.
Okay.
So one of them is, is not a social worker, but she does, she is educated in prevention curriculum. So she goes around to almost all of our elementaries doing just specific programs and curriculum in a prevention model. The other two are social workers, and we put them in two buildings each because stretching people too much thinner makes it really difficult. So we try to look at the gaps that were created with some of the programming that we've lost. For instance, Buckeye Ranch, I know, was one that the grant, that the Buckeye Ranch had secured for the funding to come into our programs. It expired in September. So we were really intentional to try to get those Concord clinicians in those buildings first to try to address that need. But it's two different, it's apples and oranges what the services they can provide. But those were the buildings we started with. So we have two in four buildings.
Ms. Marshall, so when we talk about the fair school funding plan and how, you know, the calculations were made, right, on what a district's needs are, have those been adjusted for post-COVID needs like this?
No, they haven't been updated for post-COVID needs. But that's a great conversation for our state Senator Andrew Brenner. We meet with him in December.
I have another question. And just remind us, how, there is two elementary school, four elementary schools that are sharing two counselors, right? So we're not fully staffed on counselors either.
And I think that's a good point. So, yeah, we have a counselor who shares Emerson and Hamby, and then the other one shares Ann Hurston Whittier. And so I think that's just an important part of the conversation is, you know, we can look at size of buildings and demographics and need, and there's just tons of factors. But at the end of the day, if you don't have that tier-one go-to person there most days, that's when you start missing pieces. And we, we can accidentally call something mental health or call something a situation that's bigger than it is because the initial tier-one person isn't there to intervene or do some regulation or do some skill building, even within the classroom on a regular basis. So that's where it's tough to make too, too quick of a jump, especially in those buildings, until we really know what that, that tier-one level is met.
So just a follow-up, and then I'll step back. So I'm curious as to what those kids do that are like, I really would like to talk to a counselor. I have to schedule and maybe not be able to see a counselor for two weeks. So what, what happens there? They just don't see somebody?
Correct. And I, I know some of the counselors that are bouncing back and forth between buildings, they might, you know, since it's only every other day, but then let's say a few weeks ago, we had wee day, so then it goes to even three or four days. So they can't make those promises to kids, "I'll see you next time I'm here," because they don't know. So it's, it's a lot of crisis management in those situations of the big fires that are happening on that day in the building that they're in.
So is there, this is an opinion question. In your opinion, what would fill the needs, what would fill the most needs? What would impact the kids in a positive way being fiscally responsible?
The elementary level?
Yes. Well, I guess we should back up. Are we set at the high school, middle school level? Do you feel good about what we have there?
From a fiscal lens, yes. I think, I think Westville's got a great model. I think there's always more. But I do think, you know, we have to pivot and look at our littles right now and start just reexamining what we're doing well, what we can do better, where we can really beef up that, that little level so that that secondary level gets even stronger.
Yeah, so build the foundation. And I've been able to go to some schools and read some books, and I keep hearing at each elementary school, that's the need they're asking for the most. So again, in your opinion, how can we help?
I'm not sure that's possible to answer. You know, I, I do think, whether you're, you know, sitting, you know, at Hawthorne or Hamby or any of our buildings, you should have daily access to a school counselor. So I think that is the priority, to make sure that, that we really fill that tier-one level, I think is the priority. You know, to, to Mrs. Meyer's point, you know, for a kid to walk down to the office and say, "Can I see a counselor?" And at all but four schools, that can usually be filled. You know, that, that's tricky, right? So you, you want that access despite the numbers looking a little different.
Okay. Any other questions? Joe, any thoughts from you?
I, I forgot to mention that that was another theme that's occurred in many of my meetings is the sharing of counselors at the elementary level. And I, I mean, I, I mean, I understand your question, and I respect your response because I think, I think anybody would always say, "We need more. We just need, we just need more people." I don't know that you could ever have enough, but we're also talking about an operating levy and balancing a budget. But absolutely, from my perspective, we are understaffed in those areas, particularly at the elementary level.
Do you guys want to chime in? Anything?
I think it's important to, what, what they said originally, you know, the tier-one support, a couple counselors, that means that tier-one, but we talked about the Concord people not actually meeting the full need.
Yeah.
So I don't think it stops there. But I don't know that it's defined yet either.
That's fair. That's fair. Okay. Cheryl, any input from you? I mean, we're talking about elementary, and this is your wheelhouse. So I'm just wondering, and I'm putting you on the spot, but I really do want to hear what your thoughts are.
I'm just thinking we should have made all the administrators set up front.
This is one time where I can say ditto, ditto, dill.
Okay.
I think that they've covered what the needs are. We definitely, I would feel much better if our kid had, kids had access to a counselor every day. It's hard when people are stretched between multiple buildings, and that's something that is a common thread in conversations I'm involved in as well. So, well done, team.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Just a quick follow-up, Cheryl, before you leave. Just connecting this with our little one's ability to learn and the demand on teachers. What are you hearing from teachers? And, and how, you know, are you connecting that to the lack of, sort of the dearth of counselor support in elementary?
I think that what's on the rise, and what I'm hearing as I visit all fifteen buildings, there is increased behavioral concerns throughout our buildings. We can tell that our kids are coming in with a true range of readiness. The behavioral concerns have somewhat taken some priority in, in various buildings. I think it can be supported by a school counselor under SEL, but it also, we need to take a look at what we're doing and how we're supporting kids in the classroom and the environments that we've created for them. And how do we adjust based upon the kids that are coming in today? They're not the same as what they were ten years ago. And so we have to actually take some time and reflect on what we're doing, why we're doing it, and what can we adjust? It's real. I've spent some time in some kindergarten classrooms specifically. Early intervention is early intervention. We have to build in the systems of support early. And that goes back to age three, two, even before they come into our building. So we have started some conversations around how can we build in systems of support at school? And then how can we dig into some, what's going on within our community? And how do we partner with some of the organizations that are servicing our kids before they come to us? So we've got some work to do.
Yeah.
Because the needs have changed.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Great conversation. Okay, so the next agenda item we have is one-to-one technology. So there's been lots of conversation just over the years since I've been in the district about the potential of moving to one device for every student in the district. We aren't there yet, I think we're close. I think Carrie's going to talk to us a little bit about that. And I see Stifler's in the back.
Tim is back there, you might want to make your way up front.
Come up this way. So Mr. Stifler does have a budget for technology, but it does not include one-to-one, implementing any one-to-one program. So that is not in the forecast anywhere.
So we're seeing an increase in requests from the teacher perspective to have devices readily available for our students. This is outside of testing, this is in their day-to-day use and curriculum. And while we've been able to create a great supply where teachers have a cart for two classrooms they have to share, and in some cases, it's better, it's pretty close to a one-to-one, but it's not a one-to-one. So I think from that perspective, we have to decide whether or not this is a path we want to go on. Tim worked some numbers, looking at roughly, you know, a couple million dollar investment to get this off the ground, and then we would have to get this off the ground, and then we would have to create a replacement cycle that would also have to be supported, um, and what that implementation and rollout would look like. You know, I think from a timeline, it's at least a year on the long side to get that underway.
Can you tell us a little bit like where we are now as far as elementary, middle and, and, um, high school?
Sure. So, excuse me. From a device standpoint, uh, in the high schools, we're at approximately a 1.25 to one ratio. So, um, for every one Chromebook, we're sharing that between 1.25 students. So, um, better than the stated goal of two to one that the board has had. For elementary school, we're closer to one-to-one. Middle school, I want to say we're 1.1-ish to one. So we're pretty close across the district. Those numbers don't take into account things like having a reserve for damaged devices or devices available for testing and other needs that we would want to put into place before we hand devices to students and let them leave. But we're actually not bad, we're far better than what the stated goal has been, so.
So what is your goal?
Our goal? So in working with the teaching and learning team, um, we, the goal would be at the elementary level to have device one-to-one available for students in the classroom. Those would be onsite, not distributed to go home. They would stay at the building level. In secondary, which would be grade six through 12, we would look at a one-to-one issued device to a student in sixth grade with a refresh recommended at ninth grade. And then a collection if they would graduate, leave the district. I can't speak on behalf of teaching and learning, but, um, we would see, I would refer to them to how those, they would utilize those devices.
Thank you. Yeah, Carrie is right in terms of utilization at the elementary level. We don't think it would be appropriate to hand devices and go home, especially at our younger grades. That's not our intent. I think the way that we're utilizing them now is very appropriate and we are at the levels that I think, um, in my conversations with Ms. Relford, uh, that are appropriate for the use that we have for them there. I do get the sense from, from Anne and then my time from when I was in her role that we are, um, ever increasing getting pressure from our teachers to have, um, our students one-to-one where they actually have the device. And, and I know that's not where we were. I think COVID was a big game changer for a lot of teachers who may have been intimidated by the use of technology and then have used it and understand the leveraging of it. I would say that, uh, we really get a lot of pressure from our specialized learning students and, and this is a tool, it's not a program, it's not a curriculum, it's a tool to be looked at in the same way that you would look at a pencil, a pen, or a piece of paper. It, it's just a tool to access learning. And it is of great benefit for our students with IEPs and 504s to help them meet their accommodations and modifications, especially when you look at programs like Google Read and Write, um, and Speak to Text and things that could help them, that they do not have because in many instances, some of our teachers just struggle getting access to a device because it's utilized in other classrooms. When we look at, um, our greatest need for computers where we get requested all the time is for our English learners, uh, for many of our English learners and for many of our languages, we don't have written materials that can be translated into their language or that are not ready, available. And Spanish, yes, that's prevalent everywhere in our country. But many of our languages, and that's more than 10% of our students now, and that's just 10% of our students receiving services, um, not counting the students who may test out of being English learners because of their score on the OLLP, but are still not ready to be independent in an English language environment. And so, um, the videos that are readily available for them are their textbook. We had a grant, not sure the name of it, we had about 4,000 computers.
Yeah, it's the Emergency Connectivity Fund was a federal grant that allowed the district to purchase devices, uh, for emergency need to be able to make sure students were able to learn remotely, be able to have a device. That grant allowed the district to purchase about 4,000 devices. We have since exhausted that grant. As of this year, we handed out about 1,100 devices this year to exhaust what was remaining for that grant, so.
And we have gotten numerous requests for more, uh, from staff. When you look at, um, other stressors that are coming up on the, on the, um, amount of, of devices that we have, when you look at College Credit Plus, College Credit Plus courses are rapidly moving to be electronic only, whether through their use of Blackboard and their use of textbooks of not actually giving. And so a, a decade ago, we had no College Credit Plus courses in our, um, in our curriculum taught by our teachers onsite. Now we have well over a dozen. And, and 10% or more of our students are accessing College Credit Plus in-house, not traveling to our universities. And many of them and their families are being forced to go and purchase a device because we don't have a device for them to be able to use. When you look at standardized testing organizations like SAT, PSAT, ACT, and, and very rapidly AP, um, as the Ohio State tests have done, are all going online and digital. And what would that mean for our teaching staff is that when we come back from spring break, from about April to mid-May, when we're doing Ohio State testing, AP testing, IB testing, our devices are off the table for our staff to be able to utilize. And, and so, um, they have gotten to the point where they are leveraging the, um, instruction that they're giving during the period by the use of technology outside of, and using things like Schoology and simulations and Jamboards and all the things that I don't know, because I've never Jamboard, not how they use it. But, um, um, activities and discussions and even the quizzes and assessments they want to give in the classroom through Schoology that are, they're not able to do to the level that, that pencil and paper will be able to do, they're not always reliable and able to do. And so it really handicaps them. And so we are really, really, um, our goal is just flat out to be one-to-one, six-to-12, where we actually give a student a, a device.
So we give them a device, they take it home and they don't have Wi-Fi. How are we going to help that?
Yep, that's connectivity at home is, is obviously an issue and, um, something that, I mean, we have several neighboring districts whose demographics and, um, student populations in terms of poverty and all that are similar to ours, and they would be great partners for us and determine how they overcame those things.
I'd like to defer a little bit to Tim as well, as he's identified some additional programs that are available to some of our families.
Right, so there's some additional connectivity funding that's available from the FCC that allows disadvantaged families to take advantage of things like hotspots, um, supplements for, uh, at-home internet access, um, even to a point where they will give you a one-time discount on purchasing a laptop or a Chromebook. So that information has been sent across specifically to our EL group because as Scott stated, that's one of the groups that was disproportionately hit, um, especially as we run out of ECF devices. There are other things to Scott's point where we've worked with several of the other local school districts to see, some have done stipends for hotspots, um, some have gone out and secured, I would say, less traditional funding for things. Uh, there's also an ever-growing opportunity for grants and stuff like that. So it would just be up to us internally to manage what that looks like and where we could pull that funding. Uh, we have done surveys before, we do a, a running survey every year of students and do they have internet access and what kind of internet access at home? There is a portion of our population who would be impacted, who does not, or at least have notified us that do not readily have internet access at home. So that would be something we would have to keep in mind. The other thing I would bring up is, as we've talked about the mental health aspect, these devices, we have a piece of software on these devices that allows us to be notified when students search for things such as depression or drugs or self-harm. Having these devices in the hands of the students gives us an additional layer where we can try to have technology help fill in the gaps for where we may not have teachers or counselors available to help.
I have two questions, one that follow up on that. So there are some, um, gosh, what is the word I'm looking for, like apps that, that parents use, like Bark and others like that. Are they able to use it on the Chromebooks then? Because, you know, just trying to do their due diligence too and making sure that the kids aren't, you know, looking up something inappropriate on YouTube or?
So we have layers of filtering put into place from district-provided toolsets that may be able to provide that information to parents should they want to get involved at that level. But I would recommend we don't allow people to install their own software on devices that we hand out.
Okay, thank you. I have a, a question about, um, elementary school children that may not have, like you had talked about computer at home, the hotspot we talked about, but are they able to then, if they're an elementary student, what do we do now? Are they able to take, like check it out and take that Chromebook home and do their homework? Or are we moving to that? Or how, how are they accessing? Cheryl didn't know that she would be up here somewhere.
I thought they just, they like all set up.
Yeah.
So current practice at elementary is, and I'm just going to say this out loud, there really is not a whole lot of homework currently being assigned. At the elementary level, we, I would hope that if students are having homework, that it's more aligned with reading a book, um, having a conversation around what they read, doing something more hands-on, because we do build an opportunity during the school, school day for our elementary students to engage with technology. And so I understand that in some buildings, they are having kids do homework. Some are having them, I'm going to say the word, I ready. Our preference is that that take place at school versus at home. And so in my conversations with elementary principals and instructional coaches and teachers when I come in contact with, that's our preference for our elementary kids, um, at this stage. As they get up to about fourth and fifth grade, some opportunities may build into doing more at home, but we work them pretty hard during the school day. They should be pretty exhausted by the time they get home, mo-most of them. And so the homework, we are not assigning nearly as much as what we used to do in the past.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I love that too.
I think I also want to point out, I'm sorry, when we talk about, um, access to devices is our continue, continuation of our current infrastructure plan where we are, um, looking at external access points on our buildings so that there would be areas where students could access Wi-Fi, district Wi-Fi, um, if they had devices outside of the building, um, along with the improvement of what's available inside of the building. Tim's group has done a lot of work in the last few years to, um, improve that and to correct areas in which we don't currently have access.
And another piece from a personnel standpoint, that's actually a very real dynamic. Our first and second year teachers were born in the 2000s. And they've never lived any other way. And their teacher training at the college level reflects that. They didn't have Walkmans like I had, um, and VCRs and all that, um, or a cassette tape that you have to ravel back up with your, because it's, yeah, no, they don't, that's, that's, and so when they don't have access to technology, the way they were trained, the way they've lived their whole life, they really feel like they're going back into the dark ages to prepare our, our students for the future.
It is, it is a very real thing that we care about.
Yeah, that's very real.
New staff orientation, um, whether we care to formally admit it or not, our demographics have changed for teaching. And the teachers that are coming in are used to this level of technology, expect this level of technology and are almost being disadvantaged with the fact that it's not available to them. Because not only are they taking on a new classroom and learning the way Westerville does things, but they're doing it even more outside of their comfort zone.
I'm just curious, Carrie, you said this would cost, a one-to-one ratio would cost a couple million. Do we actually know like what that couple million is?
So I'll give you the short, we just did an RFP for our current replacement cycle of about 1,200 devices. So Tim has got some today pricing, but this would require an actual RFP related to how many devices we would procure, along with warranty cases, there's some other things. But the current cost came in.
It's about $450 a device all in. So that's Chromebook, case, warranty, and the required licensing to allow us to manage the devices. So as we extrapolate that over how many, um, there's also some work to be done where we have devices in our fleet that haven't exhausted their lifecycle and could easily be removed and used at elementary school where the, uh, usage is not as high as we would see in middle and high school. Actually, that would be part of our plan is to ensure that we're not wasting resources and if anything that had lifecycle left would be flipped back into doing refresh cycles to help pull that annual expense down as we refresh. We'll go through actual numbers now that we've had the RFP closed, so we should be able to get a pretty, a pretty good number shortly.
And just a follow up on that, so, you know, when you say one-to-one, it's easy to think, okay, well, how many students do we have? That's how many devices we need. But that's not really what one-to-one means. Right? Because you need, anyway, so why don't you talk about that instead of me? You need...
In a scenario for one-to-one, you're assuming that every student is going to be presented a device and that student is every day going to remember to charge it, every day going to remember to bring it, every day going to remember not to smash it up against the floor or the lockers or drop it or any of the other. So what we have seen as a best practice from the other districts we've talked to and even some of our vendor partners is having a small fleet of devices available at the buildings to allow for exchanges if somebody forgot a device, um, to allow for situations where, um, they may need new devices because something decides not to work in class, or they need to do testing and somebody has forgotten something. The other thing we want to keep in mind is when we put this device in the hand of a student, the students are hopefully going to use the device. So if we have a problem, if it's broken and that device requires repair, we need to be able to have equipment that I can readily hand to students so they're not at a stop-work state for the day. So we would probably maintain small fleets in the high schools and middle schools. We wouldn't get rid of all the carts that we see. We'd probably put something in place around having additional chargers and power cords and things that are readily available for the buildings so that we can keep track of that stuff. A lot of other districts have put pricing models in where they'll charge a student for a lost adapter or stuff like that. Those are other considerations we can have based on usage rates. But yes, you're right, it wouldn't just be, we have 14,300 students, so I'm buying 14,300 Chromebooks. No, it's not that, not that.
Yeah, thanks for walking through that. It's, um, it's, it's easy to look at the numbers of where we are and think, oh, we're so close, right? And, and we are in some ways, but it's actually like a paradigm shift. Right? Getting true one-to-one, it's, it's increasing the numbers, but also just completely shifting the way that we're using devices and moving them through buildings and having them available, so.
And the total number of devices we have includes the devices throughout their entire lifecycle. So some of those devices are for or up against their five-year replacement within the next couple of years. I don't know that it would be wise to take that device and hand it to an incoming ninth grader. So there's a little bit more flux to those numbers. Especially if we get an opportunity to be a little bit creative with the refresh scheduling, we may be able to utilize that stuff to help drive, like I said, the ongoing cost down. Because it would be an ongoing cost.
So, thank you for the inventory. I mean, that you've really drilled down and, um, we've been asking for that for years. So it's, I'm super impressed and I appreciate all the hard work from you and your team. Is, is there anything we didn't ask that we should ask that maybe we should know or the community should know?
I would say the other things that we want to keep in mind is as we increase device count and we increase how readily available these and we increase how readily available these devices be, need to be, meaning I need to have a pretty substantial turnaround time, I need to be able to get replacement devices. We're probably looking at a combination of not only a warranty agreement with a third party to help us service devices, but you'll probably need some sort of staffing augmentation internally. So whether that turns into full-time headcount or that turns into vendor support, there's some models that we still need to go through based on count. But I would not ignore the fact that there would be some operational costs uh, to keep this running as successfully as we'd like it to be.
So I'd be interested in hearing what those are.
Me too.
If you could flesh those out and get back to us.
Tim, can you also talk about, um, we talked a little bit about, like, if we would, there would be like an insurance for the device, like if a student were to damage or if we charged the students.
Correct, so right now, every Chromebook that has been purchased since I started with the district, we purchase with accidental damage protection on the device. Uh, this allows us to repair the device at no cost. Should it get dropped or water damaged, basically it covers anything that isn't a malicious act by a student. Several districts have gone the route of charging their students for that. Uh, I think that would be a disservice for our students. I think based on how our district is made up, especially when you look at some of the more disadvantaged students, um, forcing them to pay for that coverage, I think that should be something we take care of. Especially because that allows us to maintain a level of support that'll keep these devices in students' hands. Um, they also help us maintain the resale value of the devices. So we can get to a point where if they've exhausted their lifecycle and they're still in good shape because they're being maintained, we may have an opportunity to not just recycle them, but sell them back and receive a credit that we can use to help with our next refresh cycles.
Thank you. Any other thoughts?
I'm, awesome work, guys. I, I came from a district that had one-to-one eight years ago. One of my big aha moments when I got here was that we don't have one-to-one. I, when I go to dinner with my wife and my two sons, I want four forks, I don't want three forks. Um, you know, we should not force kids to share learning tools, in my opinion. I would go as far as to allow elementary kids to bring them home, but I have absolute trust in the teaching and learning team to know what would be best for that. But that's what we did, um, where I came from. And also that allows you to, I, I like your, your discussion about the safety features. One quick story, where at a graduation ceremony, a couple of years ago, building principal gets up during the ceremony, leaves, gets on his phone. I asked him after, what, what were you doing? He said, I got an alert that a student had been looking up self-harm and he got it and made the phone call to the parents while he was at the graduation ceremony. So, um, you can't do that when kids have their own devices.
Yeah, I think being, it, it sounds cliche, but anytime we catch one of those where we catch it with enough time for it to be actionable, uh, there's a tremendous amount of work that happens on the mental health side, on the IT side, to make sure that those categories are set, the alerting is set, people are acting on it, you know, building principals, counselors, but all it takes is us catching one, totally worth it.
Do the kids know?
Um, I would say we don't do anything to hide it and they will see kids being pulled from class to do assessments, right? If they look up something that triggers that system. Like I said, we don't go out of our way to be sneaky with anything because the idea with the tool is to keep people safe, not because I want to go, aha, I got you, you know? I've got a teenage daughter and an elementary-age daughter. Fine, you know, catching kids is hysterical and great and you might teach them something, but catching a kid who truly is in need, that's the kind of stuff that it's designed for.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I just want to point out one thing that Carrie said really early on that I think it just went right by people. Uh, it's a twelve-month lead time to implement. And so it's November, so we would not be, if we decided right now we were doing it, not be implementing at the start of school next year. But there would be an opportunity for semester break to implement. So just conversations to have actually in the near future.
Sure, I think it's good for us to look at these pieces as we're talking about a potential levy though. Awesome.
Um, so up next, we have all-day kindergarten, so there's been lots of conversation. So we charge tuition for all-day kindergarten, we're at about sixty percent-ish. I think Dorit's going to talk to us about that.
Yeah, this one's just really quick. Um, there has been conversation about whether or not we would like to be a one-to-one, uh, all-day kindergarten school district, lots of things, right? Um, this one's just easy math. We have nineteen sections of half-day kindergarten that would require us to hire nineteen teachers and, um, no longer charge tuition. So it's about a two-point-five million dollar investment.
Are you, yeah, I, yeah. Are you hearing about that at your three Qs?
Um, no, that has not come up in my, in my recollection. I don't remember anybody saying that. Yeah.
So Cheryl, I'm wondering what the staff thinks.
Yeah, really.
So I was the one that they didn't say, you should talk to them.
We need you.
So what I would say to you is that if I had my way, we would be all-day K for all. And I have conversations with elementary staff, elementary principals, we fully understand the benefits of having kids under our care for longer periods of time. We know in our district, parents have choice, but what you will find is that the needs of kids vary based upon their pre, prior experiences coming to us, I've said that before. Um, but the way we make an impact over time is to get kids early intervention as early as possible.
Yep.
And that could look a variety of ways. Um, so I just think we want to be open to all options that are going to be beneficial to students and beneficial to families. Um, our all-day kindergarten teachers will tell you that they are able to cover a lot of things during an all-day, uh, full day versus our half-day kindergarten teachers do struggle from time to time to cover the grade-level content and safety. And so you would give us the gift of time that I feel most of our students would get.
So remind me, if a, a child is in half-day kindergarten, do they still have gym and art and all that? Okay, they do.
Don't have it at the same frequency as all-day K.
Okay.
All-day kindergarten rolls into the regular rotation as we move grades one to five. Half-day K gets one special for one rotation and they get it, um, once during the rotation, so it's not.
Okay, and so would that also help with transportation? Like, would there be any cost savings there?
No.
It might reduce, it might reduce some midday routes. The need for some midday routes.
Scott, do, uh, tell me the numbers again. You said there were nineteen sections of half-day kindergarten or nineteen teachers who are each teaching two sections of half-day kindergarten?
There are nineteen teachers who are teaching half-day kindergarten. We would need nineteen teachers.
Right, so those, so those nineteen are doing an AM and a PM.
Yes.
That's why we would need nineteen and not eight and a half or nine and a half.
Right, thanks. We have classroom space, that's not an issue.
Have nineteen teachers or we need nineteen teachers?
Well, we have nineteen teachers that are teaching half-day kindergarten, so they would have, they would be.
You're right, you're right.
So it wouldn't be a.
Wait, wait.
Nineteen sections of half-day kindergarten.
Okay.
Nineteen sections of half-day kindergarten.
That's what we need.
So it'd be nine and a half FTE addition.
Okay.
Yes, nine and a half would contin, well, nine, yes.
Right.
Not a half, but yes.
Gotcha, thanks.
So, do we have, currently, do we have the space?
We do have the space.
And is it in the right places?
There goes the transportation savings.
Well, when we went through realignment, um, and created, uh, several, several, um, additional specialized learning classroom spaces and then right-sized our buildings. We now have enough classrooms in each building to have the same number of classrooms for kindergarten as we have for first grade, second grade, third grade. So we will still face, just like we faced at a couple of our buildings this year, overflow issues based on a particular s- grade level population at a particular building, but we do have the classrooms.
Thanks.
So really, is something we could kind of phase in?
Right now, we have, I want to say six hundred and twenty-five plus kids participating in all-day kindergarten. So, um, the, the question would be, um, you have another three hundred and twenty-five, three hundred and fifty kids. Why, really, the question is why would, are they not interested in it right now? I think that's a question that has to be answered as well.
So do you think we have a large group that isn't interested in all-day?
I don't know if it's that or if it's the cost.
Okay.
I mean, you, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I would probably say it's more of a cost issue for some of our families versus, um, not interest or high experience with kindergarten. Um, we have a lot of families where there is a parent at home, so there's not a real need to pay for all-day tuition, right? Then we have some cases where it's more best to communicate with our families so they understand the tuition is on a sliding scale. But some families don't comply for various reasons because even though you think it's not a lot of money for tuition, it could become a hardship when you have other expenses and responsibilities. And so I think it's in range. And I would, I would hope that if we move towards all-day K for all, that that'll probably level the pain feeling in a way that we're not right now. It's kind of if you choose it or not, I think research will tell us that early intervention is the best resource for families and that's how we ensure the foundation for kids moving up the grade levels. And so the earlier we can catch them, the more time they can be with us, the better off our kids will be. Um, in a public education setting, we provide the most rich level of support uh, for early intervention because all of our teachers are certified teachers. So their kids may go to other educators or co-renaming and not all of the teachers are edu, are trained with a license providing a level of support. We get the most bang for our buck from the teachers that are investing and ongoing investing in their education and licensure. And we are presenting children and families with the best educational options.
Nice.
Can't go wrong with having.
Um, and so just related to that, I realize like there's the cost issues a barrier for some families now and there are all kinds of reasons why people aren't asking. It's my recollection that everybody who wanted all-day kindergarten this year, we were able to get them spots this year. But again, we don't know who, if there was no cost, right?
So from our experiences, we work with all of our families. If they want in, we're going to get them in, but even after they're in, we're still working. There's a struggle over that cost and we work with our families. Um, but I, I, now this is your two for me in this position. Um, I know I need to invest some time, effort and energy to, on the, out in the community to get a better feel for the whys behind it. But based on my experience as a former kindergarten teacher, um, I used to do a lot of house, home visits and worked in districts where we had all-day K and we had all-day preschool for our kids as young as age three. And so not saying we have to go to that route, but there are spaces in districts across the nation who are doing some innovative things to try to catch kids early. And we are a little behind, we're eight ball as far as offering all-day K for all. And I just would love to see us move in that direction so that we can, um, solidify the foundation for all kids.
And, um, so we have this sort of natural experiment, although the people in those groups are self-selected, right? So it's not like a randomized, we don't randomly assign kids to half-day and full-day. But are we looking at outcomes, half-day versus full-day within our district?
I'm going to tell you, I can pull the data and it does vary based upon what the supports that families put in place for their kids.
Yep.
And so it varies. Um, you will find that we have kids doing well in half-day and full-day. But you will also find that we have kids who are struggling in both. But the struggles vary based upon what those prior experiences were.
And are we following kids, like, say, when they get to the third grade? Okay, thanks. Love numbers.
Spreadsheets.
Love spreadsheets.
Just a little point of clarification for, you asked a question about if all kids wanted in. Some of them had to go through the open enrollment process to change buildings. So just a point of clarification.
Thanks.
Anything else? I know she asked all the great questions. I don't know. It's great.
Thank you so much.
All great conversation. Um, I appreciate the board's time tonight. So I want to make sure that it's very clear that, um, regardless of one-to-one, all-day kindergarten, adding to mental health outside of what's already in the forecast, we will still need to be on the ballot in November of twenty-four for an operating levy based on the projected deficits that we have with the expiring federal funds. And so, um, I intend to put together a finance committee, a treasurer's finance committee, and I'm going to ask representatives from our employee groups, um, to attend representatives from the community. I'd ask our board financial liaisons to participate, of course, Dr. Clark and our cabinet members. And I would like to work with that committee in developing a plan for the November ballot. So determining what that appropriate mileage amount is. Um, also, uh, the potential to develop a board policy around cash balance and what triggers really for us to go on the ballot. I want to look at the balance, the reserve that we have in the forecast. Um, that was established some years ago. I just think it's time to look at that again. And so I charge this group with looking at that.
So who else would be part of the committee?
So I am open to suggestions, um, but my thought being our, uh, representatives from our staff and from our community and then our cabinet administrators.
Agree with staff. I'm just wondering how we would choose community members.
Yeah, so that is something that we'll want to talk about. Like I said, I'm open to suggestions.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we could reach out to parent council and maybe get some unknowns.
Absolutely. So, um, I wanted to reach out to parent council and, um, I did reach out to Chamber. Actually, I presented to the Chamber of Commerce to look at the business community, to see it, Westerville Chamber of Commerce. And so I would talk to the city and the townships as well.
And Nicole, I think, um, you mentioned to me that you were thinking about a, um, maybe like a person that doesn't have children, but that lives in the district.
Right.
As well.
Right, not just, yeah, community members from. And that's what I was hoping, I think I'll ask a couple of my, uh, for a couple volunteers for my fin, um, audit committee as well.
I would, um, also be interested to know, um, for the folks who work with our English language learner families, you know, there's a way to, um, include.
Yeah.
Some folks from that group too, because, um, I think it's really important to engage, you know, people through parent council. They tend to be people who are plugged in in certain ways to what's happening at buildings. And so just looking for diversity of voices would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that suggestion.
There's the spec coun, council too, right? The special ed.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'll work with our administrators for that to get some names. All right, so, um, I'll be working on getting a group together to start meeting in January. That's my hope.
Thank you.
Like later in January?
Yes.
Okay.
No, not first thing in.
Okay.
It'll be after the organizational meeting.
That's what I was looking for.
When I find out who my financial liaisons are.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. And then, the facilities master plan is the second part of this agenda. So, we have a ten-year facilities master plan. Our communications department put together a nice graph of that years back in 2019. And so, it's still available on our website if you search facilities master plan. So, the bond issue from 2019 covered the first five years of our ten-year plan, and so, we have a second five years of the facilities master plan that still needs to be addressed. And looking at timing of our bond projects that are falling off, so we have 2006 bonds that are, the last payment will be December of '27. It's collecting a little over two mils now with the updates and the reappraisal, because as values increase, rates decrease, it'll be just under two mils. And so, that will be falling off in fiscal year '27, and we would be able to leverage that roll-off with a potential no new millage issue for bonds if we were to go in the fall of '24. We are currently partnered with the State of Ohio for the Expedi local partnership program. So, the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, they have a classroom facilities assistance program. The district is not eligible for that, so they let us enter into the expedi local partnership program, which you've heard Mr. Dorn talk about. This is where we work with the OFCC on projects, and they have the potential to co-fund those projects in the future, give us credit in the future, towards a future project. And so, we are, we are looking at that, and I'll turn it over to Carrie so she can talk about it.
So, we are closing out the first phase, excuse me, the first phase of the facility master plan, and it's time to start looking at that second phase, which includes seven additional buildings that are age fifty or older. The first phase was fifty-five years or older, plus we went ahead and moved Ann Hurst forward in the first phase so that we could put walls in classrooms. So, the second phase would include buildings fifteen and over. The expedited local partnership program, or ELP, is partial renovations and additions is what's included in the current plan. So, they have a couple of different segments of how they will take credits or apply credits, and so, ours are partial renovations. We, our current amount of credible expenses is approximately seventy-nine million. When we become eligible for that classroom facilities assistance program, they'll look at that, that seventy-nine million of what's credited currently. As we continue to close out projects, that amount will go up. If we do a second phase, that will continue to increase as well. Our percentage payout of the seventy-nine mil, million would be thirty-five percent. So, currently, roughly, Phase One is twenty-seven point six-five million dollars. The addition of Phase Two would increase that credible expense, and we could apply it towards like a tiered program at our high school levels, like addressing renovations at all the high school levels. But we have to continue to wait for approval, and there's no timeframe around when that will happen, and I think that's important to note, too. So, there's no guarantee this will happen in the next five years. We're doing this work in the plant of when we will become available, then we would get notification, and then we have a certain amount of time to actually do the work. So, when we look at the second phase of our buildings, it includes some elementary schools, a couple of middle schools, and then one of our high schools. And we would have to determine in the phase of the program as to when to place that high school in the look. So, we've engaged with the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission to look at the second phase of these buildings again. It was last done in 2017, so needs updated. So, we'll look at these seven buildings. That includes updating projected enrollment along with the scope. So, some of the scope of work that was included in 2017, we've moved forward and actually funded HVAC projects, secured entryways, things that needed to be done that couldn't wait, roofing projects, things like that. So, we have to assess what that actual work looks like. And then, we also are looking at putting out an RFQ for architects and design services for that work as well. Hoping to have the updated building assessment information available by the end of February. That's kind of the timeframe we're looking at for that as well. Anything I'm missing? I'm referring to Mr. Dorn because he was so heavily involved with Phase One.
Just real quick, a note. So, when I started in the district in 2018, I did reach out to the OFCC to see how long it would be until we would be eligible for the classroom facilities assistance program, and they told me six to seven years. So, that was in 2018. I also reached out last year, and they told me it'd be six to seven years. So, it's a target that keeps moving.
It is. We did engage with them just last week, just so we could get started on the process of, in case we go down this road, because this, again, is a timely process, and so, getting these updated assessments, so having this meeting tonight was a really important first step, just in terms of having a second conversation with the OFCC, because we need to get the assessments done relatively soon, so we need the data back by the end of February so that then the OFCC can do their work with it and get it on in front of their board in July, right? I mean, it is that kind of a timely process, and for us to then modify our discrete portion of our existing ELP plan, that discrete portion would then be these additional buildings, whether they would or would not include that seventh building. It's just, it's a timely process, but it kicks certain things into play, so, which is why we're going out for, we have a design team under contract through next year, but in order to continue this work, we have to go through that process again. So, we're just starting some processes that are just required to make sure that if we do go this route, we have the ability to go this route on our timeline.
And can you remind us if there's anything other than time that makes us eligible? I mean, I mean, everything we've done, but just in terms of like...
Other people's decisions, so people in front of us, there are several people in front of us who have been in front of us who continue to maybe not elect to do the work. So, other people's decisions may influence our timeline. I think in our most recent conversation, it seemed, it seemed like we were better than six years, right? So, I don't, but this next five-year, five-year plan is within that window anyways, right? So, it's not, it's not that far out for us to conceive of actually being able to use some of the credits that we've earned towards additional projects.
Yeah, and the way the state ranks it is based on the district's assessed value per pupil. So, as property values increase, in central Ohio, for us specifically, compared to everybody else, that will adjust the list, too, because it's relative to everybody else, right? So, there's six hundred districts on that list, and they can move up and down depending on what their per pupil evaluation does.
So, if, if a district before us doesn't use their credit, do they just, we wait? Or do they, we have to wait?
They defer. They would defer to, and then they would move on.
Yeah, and part of it, part of it is then going out and maybe getting the bond to actually do the work, because they'll have to pay for their portion, so they have to be able to fund it before. It's very complex, and a lot of other people may have some effect on how it works out for Westerville, right? But the reality is, it's not predictable.
It's not predictable, and once you are offered funding, you have eighteen months to secure the local portion of that funding. And so, in some cases, districts might be offered funding, and then they have to try to get a ballot measure approved, and sometimes it's successful and sometimes it's not. And so, it's just, there's a lot involved with the timing of it.
Sounds very complicated.
And we just hope that the program continues to be funded, right?
Yeah.
What's our range of where we are on the list? Typically, I mean, I know it changes, I'm just curious where we are typically.
We are on the lists three hundred and something, but, but according to the, our consultant, there's really about thirty schools in front, districts in front of us. It's not really like worth three hundred, and they're taking a hundred this year.
So...
It just doesn't play that way.
Yeah, just real quick, this was the Ohio School Facilities Commission, back before it was the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission. That was established in nineteen ninety-nine after the Deroff decision. So, this was an, like, their attempt to help with funding for school districts to be, you know, constitutional and all that. So, this has been going on for a while, and it, it is subject to the state's appropriations that they do, everybody knew. And the state did actually approve an additional measure last year to increase the appropriations because they had so many districts, because I think when they name the districts that are eligible, they do more than what they have funding available, knowing that not every district is going to pass. But I think more districts pass them what they thought they were going to, and so, they had to do an additional appropriation measure for it.
So, we're like, that's really confusing. We're three hundred, but there's only thirty districts ahead of us. It's so hard to plan, too.
Well, that's because, I mean, the districts one through whatever have funded or have done theirs already. So, the district I came from, we were in, we were like five eighty, five eighty-five. We were way down at the bottom, but we had a higher per pupil expenditure or valuation.
So, where I graduated from high school in ninety-nine, they got funding just like right after that. Yeah.
Did she say ninety-nine?
Did she say ninety-nine?
I know, it made me feel old.
You were just talking about teachers and what?
Okay.
Love your positive outlook.
Any other comments here, or no?
I, I just have one question about the five-year forecast generally and all of the things you had to share with us this evening. So, do all schools in Ohio that receive public funds have to do that?
Yes. All schools in Ohio, the traditional public schools are required to do a five-year forecast that we do in November and May every year.
And who doesn't have to do that?
So, private schools don't have to do that, and the community schools also don't have to do that.
And do they ever receive public funds?
They do, they receive billions of dollars in public funds.
I kind of knew the answer already, but...
They also don't go through the audits that we go through, you know? Like to say, we spend six months out of the year with our state auditors. It's Julian and Group, but through the state audit. But, yeah, they don't go through that either.
What senator supports that?
A lot of them, unfortunately.
I know, but we talked about one, I can't remember his name, sorry. No, go ahead. Anything else here, sorry?
So, just real quick, Scott mentioned it briefly, the request for qualifications for architect and design services. Carrie, you want to talk about what we're doing with that?
Turn that back on. So, we had a number of firms that responded the last time we went through this process. We have asked for those that might be interested to re-smit their qualifications, and we are looking at some smaller capital projects this fiscal year with some of those groups. And then, we will formalize the RFQ process moving forward with Phase Two of the Facility Master Plan. So, it'll, it'll be a more formal process, and that would get posted once we make that decision.
And that's something that the OFCC requires.
Correct. It is something the OFCC requires.
That's going to have to happen like immediately, the qualifications.
Yeah.
Just because they'll have to have conversations with the OFCC about their assessments and the pre-bond work that we'll have to do.
Makes sense.
That's all I have.
That's all you have?
Thanks for entertaining me.
Anything else that you guys would like to, any words of wisdom? No?
Anything that we forgot to ask that we should know?
Are there any administrators, four or five of us back there that wanted to say something that didn't?
They all look back to back.
Look at them, all turn around.
Thirty and anything? No? Okay. All right. So... Fourteen point one, a resolution to reinstate Roberts' Rules of Order, may have a motion?
So moved, second.
Just real quick, Mr. Bell did have to leave the meeting early, so I may have known that. Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Otman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Which takes us to board comments.
Am I to go first?
Sure. So, I just want to thank everyone for coming tonight and spending time with us and educating us. We really appreciate your, all of your words and help, helping us understand it actually. We're all passionate about public education, but we're not the boots on the ground, and we really appreciate you sharing your perspective and your thoughts with us, and the data, of course. Secondly, I want to say congratulations to Jen and Louise for reelection for Jen and new incomer for Louise Valentine. We're super excited to serve with you. I've only been here ten years, but I did look back. I think this will be the first time we will have an all-female board. Just saying. So, I'm super happy about that and excited for you to join. And then, lastly, the retirees, I just want to say, you know, congratulations, and we will miss you, and like, there's a, they're always amazing people in there, but sometimes it touches you just a little bit more than others, and, you know, excited for them. And I think that's it for me.
Go ahead.
Well, I will echo those comments. Thank you so much. This was really supportive. I really appreciate all of it, and yes, I'm glad that you got re-elected and, and really excited to work with you, Louise. And congratulations to all the retirees. I, there's a lot of things happening down at the State House, and they're getting ready to go home, I promise, but I'm going to keep this one short. For all of us, there's just a few pieces that I thought were important. The House passed House Bill 214, which is sponsored by Representative Adam Holmes. He's a Republican from Nashport, and it would require each public school to adopt a policy regarding certain expectations related to the performance of staff member professional duties. The bill does clarify that schools cannot require employees of job applicants to offer an opinion about specific beliefs, affiliations, ideals, or principles, which is very couched. The House also passed House Bill 250, sponsored by Representatives Jessica Miranda, who's a Democrat from Forest Park, and Tracy Richardson, a Republican from Marysville, which revises the military enlistment diploma seal by renaming the military's enlistment seal to the military seal since the legislation makes students entering the US Military Academies or ROTC programs on scholarship eligible for that seal. And the House Ways and Means Committee, the committee held a second hearing on House Bill 263, which is sponsored by Representatives Danny Isaac-Hon, my apologies, thank you if I butchered that name, a Democrat from Cincinnati, and Thomas Hill, a Republican from Madison Township. Now, you all know that I'm really intimidated by last names, which would reauthorize a property tax freeze for certain owner-occupied homes whose owners are seventy years and older who earn less than seventy thousand per year. And then, the Senate Government Oversight Committee heard sponsor testimony on House Bill 68, sponsored by Representative Gary Click, a Republican from Vickery, in which it passed out of the House in June. This legislation would prohibit certain procedures to alter minors, minor child sex, and would designate this act as the Ohio Saving Adolescents from Experimentation Act. This bill also includes House Bill Six, which would enact the Save Women's Sports Act to require schools, state institutions of higher education, and private colleges to designate separate single-sex teams and sports for each sex. So, waiting for them to go home.
Thank you for that. I want to thank, well, again, everybody who's stuck with us this whole time, and those who, even better, those who watch it, like, wow. Thank you. And just all the tremendous work... And just all the tremendous work that goes behind this every day. Um, and, you know, I want to thank Dr. Clark for getting out there and talking to people. I know it's, it's, it takes a lot of time, and I want to thank those people for showing up to have conversations with you and amidst their busy lives. I think that's really important. We have such a wonderful community, um, that, you know, I, I guess I'll just say, I said on the campaign trail, like, our schools are the center of our community, they really truly are. So thank you for, um, making that happen. The conversations are great, and, um, I appreciate the congratulations. I'll just say that, um, I'm always humbled that more than one person votes for me. Uh, so I, you know, my husband has to, but, um, just appreciate the community support and really looking forward to serving another term, and thank you for the opportunity and working with Louise Valentine. Thank you.
Awesome. Um, guess what? I was ready to go, so I clicked out of the agenda, but don't worry.
You.
I got it. Sorry. Okay. Dates, times, and location, we will meet here in regular session on Monday, December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, at six P.M. here at the Early Learning Center. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Eight thirty-two.
And we're adjourned.